Good evening to everyone. The League of Women Voters of Pocatello welcomes you to this forum featuring candidates running for the Pocatello City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization which seeks to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any post. Instead, it works to provide educational opportunities to the voting public to ensure a well-informed electorate. League is always open to new members, both men and women, and there are membership forms available should you be interested. League of Women Voters of Pocatello is on Facebook. Anyone is welcome to comment on our posts, but please be aware that all posts must be relevant to League positions and will be monitored by our Facebook administrator. Except for authorized news organizations, no other videos are allowed tonight, so please silence your phones and do not video any part of this forum. Our National League of Women Voters procedures require that we inform you that no part of a League of Women Voters sponsored video production may be used in advertising or any other way to promote a candidate or issue, nor can it be used in any format other than its entirety. Tonight's forum is being recorded by Pocatello Community Media, a big thank you to them, and will be streamed live. It will also be available after the event on YouTube. Our moderator tonight is Margaret Gagnon, who will introduce our panel and describe the format for tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you. We're so glad to have everyone here and to dive right into meeting the candidates for the three contested city council races for the city of Pocatello. We'll take about the first 15 minutes to get to know the candidates for seat three, who are up here on the dais with me, and then we'll take a short break and switch out and have the candidates for seats one and two join us for that last little bit more than an hour. And we're trying to be fair with time per capita, per head. So, the process for this evening will be each candidate will introduce themselves in two minutes. They'll share their qualifications, their goals for the office, why they're running, and they'll introduce themselves to you. We'll start from my right and go across to my left, and then we'll alternate for the rest of their time up here. Each one will have a chance to be the first one responding to a question, and we'll alternate throughout the rest of their time. There is not time for rebuttal. They'll have one minute for response, so they may choose to use some of the following questions' time to respond if they did care to rebut anything that came up. We also will allow them one minute for closing remarks before the next group comes up here. So hopefully, within that time, you'll get to hear a variety of issues, and each of them addressing sort of what differentiates them from the other candidates up in front of you today. With that, if you have questions in the audience, just raise your hand. We'll get a card to you, and you can put your question down on the note card. We will get the cards over here to the crew that reviews them, make sure that they're legible, that we're not duplicating questions, and then we'll get them to the candidates. And at any time you have a question, please just feel free to make that known. To begin, we will start on my far right with the incumbent for seat three, Roger Bray.
Thank you, Margaret. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this service. I think it's a great service to allow some dialogue in this format. As Margaret said, my name is Roger Bray. I am a native of Pocatello. I was born in the St. Anthony Hospital that no longer exists. And I grew up on a farm north of Fort Hall, went to school in Blackfoot, went to church at the church I have served the last 28 years as the pastor, Central Christian Church. I married my wife, Viola, many years ago, 41 years ago. We have two children, and those two children are graduates of ISU. And Viola went to ISU and got a second degree there, so she could teach here. She had a dance degree before. I did my undergraduate work at Northwest Christian University and the University of Oregon, and I did my graduate work at Texas Christian University in Fort Worth, Texas. I have been involved in numerous things here in Pocatello. I can't go into detail in the time we have, but I'll just say I've been on the board of the Rod and Gun Club, and I was a founding president for Gateway Habitat for Humanity, and I filled in a lot of distance all between. I've been very engaged in our service community, our community that works with nonprofits. So, from the onset tonight, I want to say that I believe in Pocatello. I am positive about Pocatello. I am a realist who can look at all things objectively. Problems need to be identified, and successes need to be celebrated. We are a city of successes, and we are a city of problems, and to not identify each of those is to do a disservice to all of our people. To be truly successful as a city, we have to identify our opportunities and face our challenges.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Idaho Lorax Carter.
Well, let me see. What am I? Who am I? I'm a media person, so you get transparency, maybe more than anybody can handle in this community. But transparency is my middle name, because that's why I'm a media person. I'm an educator, not just a simple educator. I've worked and educated people around the world. And here, the project is, I'm an expert in project learning, is to educate you all. So let's see how well we are educated right now. Can I just ask for a show of hands? How many have been to the hearings on the uranium contamination here? Anyone? Just me? How many have looked at the maps of the data? Anybody? Oh, two, three. Hey, we're learning. Some people are learning about this. Great. I'm also a media person, I'm also an entertainer. I have an extroverted personality. I'm not afraid of people. I'm not afraid of anything, really. And I will get in your face if I need to. But I'm here to educate you, not to take crap, not to listen to people, to spread disinformation. We put up information for you, but if you don't act on it, then the future is also what I deal with. Documentaries, more media, more attention. We're going to lose our tourism. We're going to lose our agriculture. We're going to lose our university, because none of this can survive in the most radioactive and number-one city in the world, which goes to the last part. I am a broad-based scientist in many areas, and have been utilized as a scientist in think tanks and other things around the country, and I still work with a number of different contaminated sites around the country. I'm an expert in that field, so if you want to know about cancers, you want to know about contamination which causes cancer, I'm here. Ask me.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Ethan Ennis.
Hello. My name is Ethan Ennis. I'm a local businessman and entrepreneur. My background is in banking and finance. Currently, I own my own insurance agency, JP and Associates, and I work with a lot of small businesses, helping to establish their employee benefits. I work with individuals, especially on their health insurance, and I do love this community. I look forward to raising my kids in this community. I find a lot of ways to stay involved, especially through Pocatello-Chubak Chamber of Commerce, Legislative Council, Rocky Mountain Health Foundation, USA Archery. In my spare time, I do teach archery lessons. There's plenty of opportunity, and I think this is a very exciting time to be in Pocatello. Pocatello is growing, and it's a very good thing. The greatest thing about this growth is it's going to lend more opportunities to our citizens. The greatest issue facing this community is economic growth and development. And I've talked to a lot of businesses and a lot of individuals that are excited for this, but the consensus is pretty clear that we want responsible growth, and we don't want it uncontrolled. Lots of folks would like to see a plan with this growth, but I think a part of that in lending, in bringing more opportunities to our citizens, we need to attract more manufacturing jobs, we need to attract more transportation jobs. But this community is growing regardless of whether we're ready for it, and I'm excited for it. But we need positive leadership. We need folks that are going to look for the positive solutions, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arlen Walker?
Hi. I'm Arlen Walker. I lived in the university neighborhood for the past 34 years and a little over 50 in Pocatello. I was born in Idaho Falls, raised on a farm between Idaho Falls and Shelly. Came to ISU, got a degree, and I taught at Pocatello High School for 28 years, during which time I was three years head negotiator for the Teachers Association and three years as president. Following that, I worked for Kimberly-Clark Corporation at Ballard Medical, and then finished up my career in the College of Technology at ISU. I retired in 2014. I too love the community. I think that responsible growth and responsible budgeting and things like that are some of the best things that we could be doing. My main philosophy is do no harm, but represent all the citizens to the best that we can. I'd like to see transparency in government, an open door between or among the citizens and the council when things come up. I'm an avid animal rescue person. I'd like to see our shelter move towards a no-kill basis like is happening in communities around us. I'd like to see lower taxes, maybe through responsible budgeting and efficiencies and that sort of thing. Mostly, I'd like to just represent the citizens and my neighbors and you folks, and have your best interest at the basis of every decision. And I think the decisions should be wisely made, soundly founded, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. And our last candidate to introduce himself this evening, Mr. Don Zeeb. I did not ask for the pronunciation. I apologize. Don Zeeb.
Zeeb. B. Well, I'm usually last. I've always been last. A name like Zeeb, so I feel right at home. I have a passion for excellence, and I hate bureaucracy, so I like to get right to the point of a lot of things here. I spent the first, I'm a father, I'm a husband, and I'm a grandfather. And I'm a little bit of an outsider, because I wasn't born in Pocatello or in Idaho. I was born on Long Island, New York, raised in the Bronx. Came to Idaho State University in 1976, graduated in 1980, met a local girl, took her back east, spent my career with Oracle and General Electric. I spent the first 24 years of my professional career in sales, acquisitions and buying companies, and budgets. I controlled the budget over $500 million. My wife wanted to move back to Pocatello. Happy wife, happy life. So I moved back to Pocatello, and here I am today. When I got here, I didn't have a job. I didn't know where I was going to get a job, so I started my, I went and bought 67 acres at Pocatello Square and recruited Ross Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Staples and Lowe's and those other companies there, so I've got a professional business career, and I've also got a career in development, in real estate development. My son just recently separated from the Army. He was an EOD officer. He came home and he said, "Dad, I don't know what I'm going to do. There's no jobs for me here." That's why I'm here today. I didn't have a job when I got here. I needed to find an opportunity. My son didn't have a job. He needed to find an opportunity. So my goal and my objective is that someday, I hope, all of our adult children have an opportunity to come back to Pocatello and have a great-paying job. And some of those jobs, since I've been back here, I've recruited and worked with 26 companies and created over 1,180 jobs, and you can go right down the list. Allstate, Costco, Hobby Lobby, Brady's, Aramark, and others. So I'm a professional in that.
We will now begin with responses to questions, starting with Mr. Idaho Lorax Carter. The first question to you with one-minute response time. What is the most pressing issue facing the city of Pocatello, and how do you plan to address it if elected?
Well, it's a tough one, because delusional people, people who can't read, people don't know science, people don't know what's killing them, people with cancer, you know, spreading and growing. It's nice when agencies finally admit to it, but that's because I've been on their backs since I've been here, so they finally will publish this stuff. So one of these days, you'll even have an epidemiological study here, and I think that is, you'll wake up a lot more people, but in the meantime, everything else is going to hurt. The university cannot survive in this radioactive city. That's why I work with the university. So to me, yes, I care about this community. I have family here, but I also care about the university, because that should be our leader, and hopefully, I will make it so.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis.
The greatest thing facing this community is economic growth and development. Pocatello has some things that is very hard to find anywhere else in the state. It's where we are at the crossroads of two major trucking corridors, I-15 and I-84. We have an airport that can handle large cargo and transport planes, and then we also have the railroad. So we've got the plane, we've got the train, we've got the truck, and it's very, very rare to find all those things centered in one community. We're just on the outer reaches of Salt Lake City's economic impact area, and so I think that is economic growth that a lot of companies and a lot of people are looking to this area, and we need to have a hand on the wheel. And I think there's a lot of encouragement that our elected officials can lend to the public, because these things are very exciting.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I think one of the biggest problems facing our community is the vast amount of people living at subsistence level due to low income. I think that we need, as some of the others have mentioned, industry to come in to provide better than minimum-wage jobs. I've seen neighborhoods come up and go down, and in my animal rescue work and charity work, I deal with a lot of people that sometimes don't have the wherewithal to deal with the necessities of life, let alone the taxes and things that they have to pay. I would like to see taxes held down and income brought out, if we can do that. Right now, we have one of the highest tax rates in the state, highest residential property value to tax, and I think it's doing a disservice to a vast number of our citizens to not have the economy such that people can have a fine standard of living.
Mr. Zeeb.
Thank you. I think the greatest thing that faces us, and I would have to concur, is this election is about jobs, jobs, and jobs. Smart growth, smart jobs, and smart spending. For us to go out and be able to create these jobs will solve many problems. If we bring in more jobs, there's more tax dollars available, and my objective and my vision is to see that we raise the median income in our community, and that everybody has an opportunity to come back here to Pocatello and enjoy this quality of life and the standard of life that we've all been accustomed to. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm running, and I promise you that if elected, that I'm going to do all that I can do and continue the work that I've done to create and bring companies to this community. Thank you.
Mr. Bray.
The first thing I will say, our greatest issue is taxes. If you were out walking the streets with me in the neighborhoods I've been walking, you will see that people can't even afford to fix up their homes in many of our neighborhoods. That's an issue that should hurt our soul. Taxes are the gateway to attracting businesses. If we have high taxes, we put a barrier between us and businesses. So taxes have to be corrected. Another thing that I think is real important to clarify tonight is that it takes a team approach to attract anybody, not a lone ranger. We have had a team approach. Costco came here because of a team approach. Allstate came here despite being dissuaded for a while and then persuaded by mayors to come back here. We need to have a team approach. We had Ginny Gilliam, Greg Lanning, Robert Chambers, Dean Tramner, Dave Swinell. We had the greatest economic development team in Idaho and perhaps the Northwest, and we need to get there again.
Thank you. So to that same issue, Mr. Ennis, this will go first to you. Can you discuss how tax increment financing can be used effectively in projects such as the North Gate development without causing a burden on the Pocatello community?
Well, I think that's tax increment funding, TIF funding. That's a tool used by many, many cities and counties across the country, and that's what a lot of companies look for. They look for that, especially developers, when they're looking for a way to make back some of that money on the expensive infrastructure costs. So I don't think it's something that we need to turn away. We definitely need to use it. I don't believe every situation is ideal for TIF funding, especially if it puts a burden on the taxpayers, but I think right now, it's going to be very important. We do, I think we're going to see more use of it in Fana County and around Pocatello, because we are competing, especially with surrounding communities, for these same companies and for these same opportunities. When we bring a company here, we bring more opportunity for our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I think tax increment funding is a very important tool to encourage industries to come and stay, but I think it has to be tempered with some other condition, I'm not sure what that would be, to get them to stay and become a part of our community. How many businesses have we seen come in in the last 10 years that have lasted just to the limit that they've contracted to? Ballard Medical is a fine example. It was brought in, given a big bunch of land, $500,000 from the state to train people on the guarantee that they would stay 10 years. You know how long they stayed? 10 years. So somehow, that system has to be tweaked in such a way that these industries want to stay here. I mean, our community has a fine work ethic overall. When I was working for Kimberly-Clark at Ballard Medical, I was just amazed at the quality of loyalty and work ethic that the people from this community had while working there.
Thank you. Mr. Zeeb.
Tax increment financing is a key proponent in being able to recruit companies. When we did, and I was involved in it, Pocatello Square, with Mayor Chase and his team, to put together a tax increment financing district that was retired 10 years early, and it's put $90,000, $65 million on the tax rolls. So for that period of time, it was great. But when you do tax increment financing, you've got to look at an analysis that allows you to determine if it's going to put a burden on the taxpayers. And what's going on at North Gate is not putting a burden on the taxpayers, because the developers have already paid for all that infrastructure. As time goes on with that infrastructure, and they build buildings, they'll be able to recoup that, the money that the city put in, the money that they put the county in with a public-private partnership. By the way, that's the first public-private partnership that they've done in the state, and I've got to give credit to the mayors of both communities to make that happen.
Mr. Bray.
I think the jury's still out on whether TIF districts really work when there's so much residential land involved, as in North Gate. There's no doubt, we've been very successful with TIF districts in Old Town. We've been successful with TIF districts in the North Yellowstone, which was expanded, by the way, and made it retire early. There have been successful TIF districts right up here at Fred Meyer. But the key is having a matrix that lets you understand how much you're going to invest and how much you're going to owe. Right now, we do not know what our service-level requirement will be for the North Gate. We don't know how much police, fire, and everything else we will have to invest out there over the span of time, and that could hurt us severely. We could have millions of dollars invested in the rest of us taking care of North Gate. We could have done a study, we didn't. I've talked to business professors that thinks it's absurd that we didn't do a study, and they think it's absurd that we didn't develop.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Well, again, we've got a very delusional community here, because I've been working eight months with the county prosecutor and other attorneys just to get documents that have been destroyed here, which is no odd thing for me, knowing about documents being destroyed here. That's what I work with. By the way, I am a paralegal as well, so I'd like you to know that. That's the thing. And I miss the days of meeting with Brian and having the legal team that I'd meet with every week and, you know, being successful at educating Brian. I mean, right? Brian, I did a good job. Brian knows, so I have no doubt about he knows the issues and the problems here. But, you know, I'm not looking at not paying people for not paying any taxes at all, so you better think about what you're doing, because you don't pay taxes on contaminated property, and there are people in this community who are already not doing that. Okay? So you better look at the billions of, I participate in the hearings. I asked for that, and they granted those things, okay, to clean up this community. Billions of dollars.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Walker, and it is, what do you see as the pros and cons of combining Chubak and Pocatello into one city, and where do you stand on this issue?
I don't think it's possible to combine them into one city, but the pros of community partnerships are very great. Communities all around the nation have combined smaller towns that maintain their separate identities and had combined services, like the greater Salt Lake metropolitan area. If we could do something like have the Greater Pocatello-Chubak Metropolitan Police Force, Fire Force, Emergency Services, Road and Bridges, where it was condensed to one purchasing agency, one hiring agency, one full crew that worked for both cities, and the cities maintaining their separate identity, but a cooperative partnership developed through negotiation and mutual respect and mutual willingness to help, I think we could cut the taxes and the expenses to both communities greatly by eliminating duplication of services and bringing the tax levies down to support a combined series of services. Thank you.
Mr. Zeeb.
I think a study needs to be done on whether or not it would make any financial sense at all to combine the two cities. I think it'd be premature for me to make my assumptions and hypothesis based upon if comes, so maybe. And so consequently, I believe there should be a study done, and in that study, then we can determine whether or not it makes financial sense in many different areas, whether it's combining services or not, and if it makes sense, you bring it to the voters. But I would like to clarify one thing. The taxes for the tax increment financing at North Gate was only for the commercial property, not the residential property. All the residential property will be taxed just like any other citizen, and will take care of those fire districts and other things that are there. So we need to correct that.
Mr. Bray.
Well, the first thing I would say is that it's premature to talk about a union between Chubak and Pocatello without doing your homework first. That's a discussion you have to ease into, not dive into, because when you dive in, you create a lot of animosity. There's a lot of passion in both cities. There are lots of things that individuals consider as their own realm of interest, and I think we should have a study, but I think that study needs to go the whole route of looking at what one community will have to buy into. Pocatello has many more resources than Chubak. If Chubak residents want to keep their taxes just slightly lower than Pocatello, they might not want to buy into the resources of our airport and our golf courses and our parks and recreation and all those things.
Mr. Carter?
Oh, yeah, the most radioactive airport in the world. Yeah, that's ours. The uranium materials, yes, we have such great resources. We have a million tons of uranium spread all around, right across our valley. We have great resources. I was hoping for the French to be able, you know, not be taking the blame for things and come in here and fix things, but Pocatello and Chubak, I had just interviewed Kevin just the other day, and, you know, he just said to me, "Make my job easier. Instead of Chernobyl and Fukushima, we could just all be one big radioactive city for thousands of years, and thus we clean up." So, yeah, I've been working with Chubak for quite some time and meeting with them, and know where a lot of this stuff was, because there were people who worked for the people who spread this stuff. And, you know, I have to thank this community and all the places in Idaho for Idaho Leaks. It's not WikiLeaks, it's Idaho Leaks. And that's one of the reasons people like Brian or other people try to ban me illegally, because of WikiLeaks.
Mr. Ennis?
Combining the two towns, it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. There's, I think it's a very emotional topic, and we're going to see pros and cons presented in the coming months, but if I were to speculate, some of the positive things that might be, might come to pass by combining the towns, lower taxes, if it makes sense from a budget standpoint to lower taxes, that'd be a positive thing. A negative thing, a con, I think folks would feel like they were losing some of their identity. There's a lot of history with the two towns, and we're proud of our history and our culture, so... So, this is an exciting topic that is going to be presented to the people, the citizens, and they get to vote. It's not up to the politicians to decide, which is, this is going to be an exciting topic.
This question will go first to Mr. Zibi, and the audience members citing concern about maintenance of properties and general care and a high number of properties owned by absentee landlords and property management companies that are not well cared for. What can the city council do to address those issues?
Um, great question. I, I, I know we've got a, the city has got a enforcement organization that's out there, and I think the, there needs to be definitely a propensity to instill fines on those folks that are not taking care of their properties, and, and that, and the city needs to go in and take care of it and clean it up, and then they're going to pay for it. And if some of that, some of those properties aren't being taken care of, I think the city needs to go in, and I know of a couple, where the city should go in and condemn it and take it over. I think it's detrimental on a community that where others aren't taking care of their properties, and that should be addressed with, with code.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I think that it's important for us to present ourselves as best as we can. You only get one time to make a first impression, and Pocatello needs to be making better first impressions. Having said that, though, to get real stringent on this without having a plan in place, simply to get, become retributive to people who are not in alignment with your goals, that's not going to work. They don't have the resources to do that. We've got to figure out a comprehensive resource supplement for many of our people in our community. And one of the ways that I think you do it, and contrary to what's been said, residential is a huge part of this TIF district. I did the study, we talked with the guy that did this study, it is a huge part of the TIF district. We have seen the numbers, the most they will pay over the course of $300,000.
Mr. Carter?
Clean up a neighborhood that's contaminated with materials on them? I mean, who should be cleaning that up? The school says, "Oh, the city should do it." And the city says, "Well, we're going to just ignore it if it doesn't exist and do not tell." So cleanup is such an absurd notion here, of cleaning up litter, which of course we have trash alley and other things too, but it's all, you know, people don't have any motivation. You know, we, you know, those who grew up here don't want to leave. They have roots here, but their people are dying around them. And new people, somebody ought to do the exit interviews like we do. We know why they leave, a lot of them do. And businesses are going to be leaving too, because again, you ask a business, "Hey, come to the most radioactive city in the world and set up shop." Go ahead, tell them. Because there are people I work with who do tell them. And that's a problem, if you don't go and clean up your yard--
Thank you.
--and I mean Pocatello.
Yes. I, I believe in enforcing city codes, especially when it comes to property upkeep. But, on the other hand, I think, I think there, there falls back on the city a lot of education. I don't think, I don't think the average homeowner in town or landlord knows every code regarding their property. So I, I don't believe in a particular heavy hand. I know of a lot of folks in town that work multiple jobs, and when it, when it comes to their day off, they're not, they're not as motivated to go mow the lawn and pull the weeds and, and clean the, the curb. There's a lot of resources in, in town, and I, I believe in a little bit more of a compassionate approach. We've, we've got some great organizations like Neighbor Works, they'll rent lawnmowers for a couple dollars and they, they include the fuel. So I believe in coming together as a community to help beautify and clean it up and watch out for our neighbor that way.
Mr. Walker?
Well, I think it's, it's a two-standard issue, and it's a two-standard question. I, I heard the phrase about absentee landlords and property management companies. In my neighborhood, most of the substandard-looking properties are run by those sorts of people. The ones that are home-owned are kept up to the best that they can, and they do take advantage of various services, as Mr. Ennis mentioned. But I, I'm, as far as the absentee landlord thing and, and big property owners that are running rentals, there's no guarantee that they can keep, have a tenant maintain the property. When I owned properties, I had that in the rental agreement, but I had a hard time getting it done. So I think perhaps we ought to have some kind of a special licensing to run those kinds of, those kinds of establishments and businesses. The, the three houses on my block that are run by property management companies are very rarely, very poorly cared for, and if they had some kind of financial incentive on them, not the average homeowner--
Thank you.
--nothing punitive.
And this question will go first to Mr. Bray. What is the city council's role in further efforts to maintain or reclaim the Part of River?
Well, I don't think that it is going to happen by just floating out a river vision without putting money towards it. It's just pie in the sky if all we do is dream about the river and we don't find the way to throw resources at it. We can partner with public-private partnerships, perhaps get some donations, but until we put some money into the effort, it's not going to happen. Unfortunately, I really believe in the river, but until we put money into it and set it aside in our budget, it's not going to happen. We can float it, we can wait it, all those things, but in terms of really re-establishing the river, it's not going to happen until we put money there.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Uh, you know, we have the uranium, Pan for Uranium Festival every year, except for this year, the water was too high. But, yeah, that's how well we take care of this river, because this is the only river I know you can, because I live in a Russian river, that you can pan for uranium here. But I wanted to address the absentee landlord owners too, because you've got a group of people don't give a crap about you here, you know, and that's been the case. A lot of them have uranium materials on their thing. Sorry, I said the word crap. Is that one okay, Mr. Zibi? Make sure I don't offend anybody. So, you know, we got to deal with all these issues first. I mean, I created the Lorax Beaver Wildlife Refuge. It's a very unique beaver nursery, you know, and so I'm concerned. I'm there at the river opening, I'm there meeting with the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality at the river cutting ceremony, and with all our chiefs and all our city council people, but, yeah, we've still got a problem with our--
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
Uh, there's a, there's a large part of the river that's not, not a concrete trench. We've got Edson Victor, and we've got Sacagawea Park. There, there's actually a lot that can be done with the river that doesn't have to cost a lot of money, and we can take pride as a community in our, in our river. Long-term goals should be set, you know, if we do plan to change, change the, the river, but in conjunction with our Greenways and our, our different groups that do service projects, like the Boy Scouts with the Eagle Project. There, there's actually a lot of ways we can take pride in our, in our river, and as, as the infill, city infill projects and developments, especially with Old Town, come about and we, we grow, I think a lot of people are going to enjoy using, using that, that river and those, those nature paths. So, I, I love it. I think we can educate and encourage more use.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, well, I've been to a number of communities that have river walks, as it were. The most famous probably is San Antonio. In Idaho Falls, where I was a kid, they always had a park along the river, so there wasn't a lot to do, there wasn't a lot of private property along the river. And I don't know what the answer is for Pocatello. It's like Mr. Ennis says, there's a lot of undeveloped area, but the worst thing, although it did prevent the flooding, is that concrete ditch that they put in sometime in the 60s. I think it would help the aquifer a lot to get rid of that. But perhaps we could give a tax incentive to property owners along the river, a tax break, you know, give up 20 feet of your dirt next to the concrete wall so we can do something with the river. There's probably a lot of creative ideas if we put our heads together and have an open discussion with citizens and, and get some buy-in to the project. I'm certainly not in favor of public domain and condemning people's property just to dig a ditch, but I'd like to have people involved in it.
Thank you. Mr. Zibi?
Um, I, in, in this case, I would believe in a public-private partnership. One of the things that we recognize here along that river, much of that river is located in, in what's called the opportunity zone, and by recruiting companies to come in and take advantage of the, of the tax benefits that the federal government has offered in an opportunity zone, will allow us, allow us to go through a budgetary process and do some long-term planning and allow these things to happen. And that's, requires a public-private partnership to be able to make that happen.
Thank you. This will likely be the final question to this panel, and it's come up in a number of different ways, so it will go first to Mr. Carter. It's regarding personal business interests that are in conflict with business before the city. The city council will be making many important decisions about growth and the taxpayers' liability to shoulder some of the financial burden. Council members, a number of them may be active business owners, including those with active real estate businesses with a financial stake in the city's growth. How best can business owners on the council disclose to the public their financial interests, particularly with regard to real estate development?
Well, I believe in sustainability, and that a community as contaminated as ours, you ought to look at that very seriously, sustainability. But I would just want to throw something about the Pocatello shoot, you know, a, a sport, a new one in the community, because there's been renewed interest in it, but, you know, we just haven't ever had a government that's going to allow a new sport that goes right through the channel, the channel of the town. But I've been down it, it's either for running races, for bike races, it's a blast. That's all I can say about Pocatello shoot. Look it up, there's a site for that too. We always make sure people can have access to things. But, what was the question again? I need a little bit more on it.
I, that was great. It looks like you are--
Out of time.
--right out of time. Mr. Ennis?
Uh, I, I don't believe special interests belong in the city council, just in the same way that it is, it is a nonpartisan seat, not Republican or Democrat. I don't think we need special interests on the council. I, I've been endorsed by the Pocatello firefighters, and I'm not a firefighter. I've been endorsed by the building and construction trades unions, but I work in insurance. I've been endorsed by the Greater Pocatello Chamber or Realtors Association, but I'm not a Realtor. I, I've earned these endorsements because I'm willing to listen. These groups, these, these, these trade groups, they're, they're not looking for someone to do their bidding. They need, they need someone that will listen. And, and I think, from what they've communicated to me, that's been lacking in, in our, our current leadership, and we need to bring that back. That's going to bring a lot of trust back. So, no, we don't need special interests. What we need are--
Thank you.
--people who listen. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I agree. I think that the council should debate and discuss among themselves, and I do have to add that of the many city council meetings I've sat in, and I've sat in many numerous times, people with real estate interests and other things, particularly Mr. Johnson, recuses himself when it comes to a vote, and I've always admired that. I personally have no financial or business interest in the community, other than the best interest of the citizens is what I would stand for, but I think it might be very difficult to set aside certain interests when it comes to those kinds of things, and that's why the council is six independent people to debate and discuss and convince each other how to vote. I certainly wouldn't keep anyone off because of a profession. I don't think that profession should have any more weight in any kind of decision that the council makes than any other. But I, I agree with Mr. Ennis, we need to listen, we need to hear what the people have to say, and I'd like to see more openness with the citizens--
Mr. Zibi?
--to find those things out. Thank you.
Great question. We've been asked that question on a continual basis, and I can tell you that transparency is really critical to any position in government, regardless of what that is. As far as my real estate background, there's a, there's an expertise there that there are very few in our community have got the same kind of expertise when it comes to commercial development. And yes, I do make a commission on it, but if I don't sell, I don't eat. And if it's going to involve that I, that I can be any kind of a financial gain from it, then I'm not going to vote on it. But at least I can give a honest opinion of, of the pros and cons for what's going on. And I can tell you this, never would I ever take money out of anybody's pocket.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
We live in a very litigious society, and the perception of conflict can turn into conflict, whether we believe it or not. All you have to do is look and see how many suits have developed, and it, it can hold you up for years. So I think that it's real important to consider conflicts of interest. It's also essential to understand how important it is to have expertise in all areas of this city, not just one. It's important to understand how you take care of your dog catcher, and how you take care of your fire department, how you take care of your police department. All of those things are important, because if you don't understand those areas, you're getting into litigation again. And, so I would just say to you that it's very important to limit the conflicts of interest that anyone could be in, whether it be insurance, or it be real estate, whatever.
Thank you. And, I checked my math, I forgot we're doing one-minute closing, so we have time for one more question. And it will go first to Mr. Ennis. It is from an audience member. They're concerned about the cat overpopulation issue, both short-term and long-term, and asks, "Is it feasible for Pocatello to have a free spay and neuter program?"
Well, I, I think, from a city council standpoint, this, this would fall back to education. There, there are a number of programs, there's actually a couple free neuter and spay programs currently in the city, and I think a lot of, there, there can be maybe some better education and how to access those programs. I think, I think we could encourage our, our citizens to be a little bit more responsible with their, their pets, but I, I wouldn't anticipate trying to pass any bills that would force people to not own pets or to take pets away unless they were, you know, the only bill that would be passed to, or enforced to keep pets out of home or owner's hands would be if they were abusive, but, no, I think it's an education program.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I think it's a solvable problem. It's working all over the country. Trap-neuter-release, trap-neuter-return. In Washington DC, they had a neighborhood with 15,000 cats. Within five years, there were two. The, the situation is this, people who don't spay or neuter their animals, they keep breeding. One cat can be responsible for 102 years, but the other side of the fact is, when someone sees a hungry animal in the neighborhood, they're going to feed it. They're going to put a hole in the garage so that it can have a place to live. And with the TNR program, when you trap the healthy animals, you spay them, neuter them, vaccinate them, and turn them loose, they're obviously surviving in the neighborhood they're in, and it's called Community Cats. San Antonio has a program, Boise has a program, Salt Lake City has a program, and it is, it is a solution to the problem, and the only solution I know, because the population diminishes and diminishes and diminishes till funding through attrition, you're down to just your household pets.
Thank you. Mr. Zibi?
When we ever take, when we take these programs on, somebody's got to pay for them, and it, and it falls on the, the taxpayers. And so, again, we, we need to look at public-private partnerships to be able to institute programs like that. And, and the closer that we can get to the private companies within the organization, within our city, and have them to begin to support the, the programs that we need, the better off we're going to be. Our future lies within our partnerships, and those partnerships are with Idaho Central Credit Union, Allstate, Idaho State University, and if we can tie those partnerships together, we will succeed as a community, and we will rid many of those problems that we've got.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I'm going to start off by saying that often the problem that you see in cats is a systemic issue of poverty in the, in the human population. There are lots of people that can't afford to take care of the cat the way they want to, and so they end up keeping one kitten but letting three go. The other problem is that we can't be the epicenter of taking care of cats without some cooperation with Chubak and income and the county and things like that, or we'll just be paying forever. Trap-neuter-release is an avenue of an approach-- Trap-neuter-release is an avenue, an approach that has great merit to this city. I made the motion, by the way, last council meeting, or council meeting before, that we go for the grant, but we need to study it, and we need to be on top of it. Because if we're not on top of it, then it's going to be a consumptive issue regarding taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Carta?
I know a good Chinese recipe for cooking them. And of course, that was not in an urban area, but a city, because this is a city issue. You go out in the country, we don't have no problem too much out there that I know about cats. But in Pocatello, we sure got a new problem with roach chucks. But, you know, the solution for roach chucks, they call it my Native American friends, and they come and eat them. And of course, I like them, too. But, yeah, we've been overrun by that. Nobody's saying anything about that, but nobody wants to take one of them to their house and nurture it, because they'll chew you up alive, you know? Tough little animal, but I could mean on them, though. But again, we're just like anything in the world, there's too many. You know, you're talking about things you do to cats, what about humans? You know, we have the extinction rebellion going on. We have overpopulation. We have things that are coming to this small city related to all those factors: Running out of resources, water.
Thank you. And now you'll have an opportunity to hear one-minute closing remarks from each of our candidates, starting with Mr. Walker.
Well, I would certainly appreciate your votes. I think I have a lot of experience in the city and a lot of experience in life to bring to the job. I am certainly willing to listen, and I, primarily, I told you earlier, my main principle is do no harm. And doing that, I believe in being available, listening to people, working issues out, and I'm a big believer in negotiation from an interest-based, non-confrontational standpoint, and that's something I would like to bring to the council and to the city. I was upset with the way the negotiations went this year. I think all that can be done in-house if it's done properly, and I would like to be a part of that solution. So I would appreciate your support in the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zibi?
As a business pro, my results, what I've delivered in the community since I've been here speaks loudly and speaks for themselves. You shouldn't have any fear with the transparency we have, keeping in mind that I'm open to ideas from anywhere. I know what to do when I've got the budgets. We can succeed. We can have lower taxes, but it takes a doer to get those things done, not slogans or logos, but somebody that's actually done it. And I've actually done it, and I think that if you vote me into office, that you'll see those results that you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
Business can be conducted in many ways. I've helped start three nonprofits that are very functional. One of those nonprofits is right here in Pocatello, Gateway Habitat for Humanity's put a lot of houses on our tax rolls. The other part of this is that we are managing, as council members, a multifaceted corporation, municipal corporation. It's much more than just jobs. It's the job you do for sanitation, the job you do for the police, the job you do for the water, the job you do for the wastewater treatment. All of those components have to come together, and you have to be like a conductor orchestrating all the sections to come into harmony with each other. So we can talk jobs, 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 but it's the job you do with the city of Pocatello that makes a difference for all of you, all of you, especially our hardest-put people in town.
Thank you. Mr. Carta?
Anybody know what this word means right there, translated to English? Law. Okay? Ever hear of the Magna Carta? Just thought I'd remind you. Okay? Yeah, what we got? You know, we have a situation here. I'm going to say we don't, but we got help from elsewhere. You know, like I said, I participate in hearings for billions of dollars. The state has an issue here, because it hurts the whole state. Their agriculture, their tourism, they have it on the Forest Service here. Everybody's got to pull together, or everybody suffers. And a famous statement from me has always been, "I'm not here to save you." I've told that to many people all the time. I'm here to work with you. Because I work with other people around the world, and I still am not there to save them, because I'm not the Messiah. You want to live with uranium, that's your choice. You want to live with uranium behind an uranium curtain?
Thank you. And before Mr. Ennis ends out the candidates for Seat 3, just let the candidates for Seats 1 and 2 prepare to come on up. We'll switch out right after this next stellar one-minute by Mr. Ennis.
Our citizens are hungry for change and opportunity. Our small businesses are hungry for new customers. Our county and our city government, we are hungry for new sources of revenue. We can't keep taxing the same citizens. Our citizens are ready for growth and change. As we bring new companies to Pocatello, as we bring new citizens here and attract new opportunities, our tax base will grow. We need to rebuild trust with our citizens. We need to rebuild trust with our community and open up more lines of communication. I am excited for the next four years in Pocatello. It's going to be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Just a reminder, if you have a question for any of the candidates, you can raise your hand, and a lead member will come by with a card. Please feel free to put questions on paper, and we'll get them asked. And with no further ado, we have quite a field for both Seats 1 and 2. It's my understanding that we will be joined by just two of the candidates for Seat 2 to my left, and all four candidates for Seat 1 to my right. So we will begin with two-minute introductions from candidates, and we have our incumbent city councilman, Jim Johnson, to kick us off.
Thank you very much, Margaret, and thanks to the League for this opportunity for us to pontificate. I would like to tell you just a little bit about myself that you may not know. I was raised in Twin Falls on a dairy farm. In 1959, I was the state star dairy farmer. I didn't like milking cows, so I went to the University of Idaho on an agricultural scholarship, and there learned that there was more to life than the farm. I am so grateful for the opportunity to have been able to be on the university's debate team, to be able to participate in some drama, and to meet my wonderful wife there. After graduating from the University of Idaho, Karen and I started a master's degree for me at Brigham Young University. I'm sure you do not know it, but I have a master's degree in religious education. I have a specialty in Brigham Young. If you want to know anything about Brigham Young, I can tell you. None of you do, I'm sure. After the master's, well, at the time I was working on the master's degree, I started teaching seminary for the LDS Church and taught for two years in Ogden, Utah. The church transferred me to Calgary, Alberta, Canada, where I was the director of the Institute of Religion there. Enjoyed Canada. We started having children, and they started outnumbering us, so we had to move. So we came to Pocatello, where I taught at the Institute of Religion, and I worked on my doctorate in government, and so I have a specialty in state and local government. I am grateful for the many, many opportunities Pocatello has brought to our family. All of our children have graduated from college and from school here in Pocatello. We feel blessed to have been here, and we want to give back, and that's why I'm on the city council and want to continue there.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Schmidtlein?
Hi, I'm Paul Schmidtlein. I am very thankful to the League of Women Voters for being here tonight, thankful for all of you coming and caring about your city. Thank you, Margaret, for being an excellent moderator. It's an honor to be here with so many people that care about the city that I care about. This is a city where I raised my three sons and three daughters. It's the city where I came and went to school. It was really hard. I'm the first person in my family to graduate. I'm an enrolled member of the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma. I'd be the first Native American to ever sit on the city council. There are a lot of, not just natives, but people throughout America who are standing up, because we don't believe that we have to be professionals. I'm a blue-collar worker. I go out there and I work. I struggle to make ends meet. I can relate with the majority of the citizens here. And I am so excited to be in a city where this was the smile capital of the West. There are lots of happy people here. There's a lot of great, great people here. I think the future of Pocatello is fabulous, but I think it's going to take a whole community, and I want to be a part of that as a representative of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dale Spencer.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to come before the city. I'd like to thank all of you for showing an interest in the city. It's appreciated that we have this much interest in how our city is going forward. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, I'm a military veteran. Two of my children went to Idaho State University. My wife has her master's from Idaho State University. My stepson goes to Century High School, so I'm committed to this community. I came to Pocatello on purpose. I came here 16 years ago. I came for what was then considered a temporary job at the site. 16 years later, I'm here, I'm in Pocatello on purpose. It was then, and still is now, a diverse university town, beautiful surroundings, and culture and recreational opportunities. I've made a commitment to this community. I'm on Pocatello Arts Council. I serve on the West Side Players Theater. I volunteer many places, including on debate and speech and drama judge with local high schools. I'm on the Pocatello Air Faith Council, and I'm the religious leader at Temple Emmanuel Synagogue, the only synagogue in southeast Idaho. So I believe in this community, I made a commitment, and I serve here. I have my regular day job, so I'm an instructor on the Idaho National Laboratory, so I understand what goes on out there. Prior to that, I was a test engineer. I've been a building contractor, so I have some background, some blue collar, some white color. I understand what it takes to work for a living and how you do that. I believe we should fulfill the city's mission statement, specifically we promote and engage in open dialogue, and we treat our fellow citizens and employees with compassionate respect, and that's what I plan to do on city council.
Thank you. And our final candidate for Seat 1, Chris Stevens.
A lot of you know me because I'm in my fourth, third career, I guess, which is community activism. My first career, I was a performing artist, and I founded and grew a 501(c)(3) performing arts organization to sustainability, and it exists today in Madison, Wisconsin. After that, I became a public school teacher, and then administrator, career counselor, and wrote a grant just shy of a million dollars for my school district, and managed that and built the program that was funded with those dollars. And as I say, now my career is community activism. In that career, I am the founder of Gateway Coalition for Change, and we're working on a public roads access program with the commissioners, trying to get that clarified, so nobody gets inadvertently shot. And I also am a member of Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm a member of Portnife Resource Council, and I have been the chair of the Johnny Creek Firewise Fuel Reduction Efforts for five years, I believe. I'm also on the board of the Friends of the Animal Shelter. So I really believe in giving back to the community in which I chose to take a job, and then the community in which I chose to retire. And I know that every single person in this community deserves the opportunity to prosper, because both my parents came from abject poverty and home violence, and they were able, with resources available, to get out of that pattern, and because of that, I'm here.
Thank you. We'll now meet the two candidates for Seat 2, Lance Colbit.
I'm Lance Colbit. I've been in this community for 26 years. This is a small business owner. I do insurance and investments. Prior to that, I did a stint in the U.S. Navy on two different submarines: a Trident missile submarine, and Banger Washington, and a fast-attack spook boat, is what we called it, in Pearl Harbor, Hawaii. After getting out of the Navy, I came here to use my GI Bill and attend Idaho State University. And then I have three kids, and my girlfriend, Laura, over here. I had to point her out, because she gets red in the face. I also am the treasurer for U.S. Senator Crapo for his Political Action Committee as Leadership PAC. And I've been on the Board of Directors for the American Red Cross, the Lewis and Clark Blood Region, which oversees the blood supply of 119 hospitals, so I'm pretty knowledgeable about budgets. I'm a lifetime member of nine veteran service organizations: the VFW, the American Legion. I'm pretty involved in veteran issues. I'm a member of CivITAN, a member of ELKS. I'm a Pocatello chief, past board member of the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm just excited to be considered being a candidate and do something good for my community.
Thank you. And our final introduction this evening, Claudia Ortega.
Hello, my name is Claudia Ortega. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us the opportunity, giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. Originally, I'm from Argentina. English is my second language. I learned to speak English watching cartoons, believe it or not. We've lived, my family came to this country when I was a kid, were American citizens, and very proud to be that. My parents both had third-grade education, so my father's dream was for his daughters to be able to get more education than he did, and he was able to see that dream realized before he passed away. So I worked for 26 years in California as a dental hygienist. I am married 15-plus years to my husband. He's a retired Marine gunny and a federal law enforcement officer here in town. We moved here because my husband transferred here with his job, and we made this place our home pretty quickly, made friends. We live in a great neighborhood. And I am a firm believer in transparency and honesty, and if something is right, then it's right, and if it's not right, then it's just not. There's very little gray area in the world that I live in, and I'd like to see, I'd like an opportunity to bring some of that into our local city government, and an opportunity to give people in this town a voice where many feel like they don't have one right now.
Thank you. With that, we will turn to questions, both from League of Women Voters Services Committee and from audience members. So please, if you have a question, raise your hand, and we'll get someone there with a card. We are going to give this panel the same first question as the Seat 3 candidates had. We'll start with Mr. Schmidtlein, and we'll alternate who goes first each question. And it is, "What is the most pressing issue facing the city of Pocatello, and how do you plan to address it if elected?"
Well, I would think that the most pressing issue in the city of Pocatello is jobs. I think it's so important for us all to be able to have employment and to be able to get out there and support our families. I think as a council member, I think the most important thing for me to do would be to listen to what the citizens want. I believe in representative government. I believe in representative government. I believe that, like earlier Mr. Renna said, we live in a community that's on the junction of two interstates, and we have that airport. And I think, you know, Mr. Johnson would probably agree that location, location, location is the most important thing in real estate, right?
It is.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to Mr. Spencer.
I believe the most pressing issue facing our city right now is our transparency with our government, our trust in our leadership. I think the large number of candidates for city council proves that many of us think the same thing, that we need to, what is our government doing? Can we listen to them? Do they listen to us? How do we do that? What do we do about this? We ensure we are reaching out. We don't wait for the citizens to come here. We must go out and meet them where they are. We must go out and have town hall meetings, meet the neighbors, walk the neighborhoods. As Mr. Bray has mentioned, he does walk the neighbors, meet the people, listen to what they have to say, go find them, don't let them come find you. Go find the people, find out what needs to get done, so you can listen to what they say and do what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Well, I think it's bigger than just jobs or just taxes. It's our monetary circumstances and the fact that 50-plus percent of our population is basically living hand-to-mouth in a deprived state. So our monetary economic circumstances and its multi-facets. Secondly, I agree that there is a lack of trust and transparency and a lack of accessibility. I believe it will be the council's job to reach out, to do town halls, to go door-to-door, to do community conversations, so that every citizen has an opportunity to engage because when lack of accessibility creates the lethargy and apathy that government officials so frequently complain about. And we can fix that.
Thank you. Mr. Colbit?
So I think that while we say the word transparency often, I think it's really a quandary. I think it's a little bit between transparency and education, not just on the part of our elected people, but also our community. A good example of this is the conversation of property taxes. And what I think is fascinating is that when we have these big conversations of property taxes, the fact of the matter is, is the city of Pocatello has very little to do with anything about that. It's a county issue. The county is the one that dictates this, out of the assessor's office. And so I think we have to remember that a city council person is one-sixth of the voice. And, you know, I think it's probably more critical that we have a council that works very well together and also understands what we can and cannot do.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega?
I think that one of the biggest issues facing the city are the property taxes. People are being taxed out of their homes. And I respectfully disagree with Mr. Colbit. The city budget is a big player in that. So I also think that that's a big player in drawing businesses here. We don't need more businesses that pay minimum wage for part-time workers. We need companies that are going to come in here and actually create jobs where people can support a family, pay a mortgage. And our property tax situation is not amenable to that. It's not encouraging that. The other thing, I agree with Chris wholeheartedly, accessibility is a big issue. I've talked to thousands of people over the last few months with the recall that feel like they don't have access and they don't have a voice. That's a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Margaret. I think the most pressing issue that we need to be concerned about is our preparation for the future. I think there are many of the very best ideas in terms of tax conservation and communication that haven't even been thought of yet. I spend very close to 20 hours a week with my city council responsibility. I'm out among the people. I'm attending the events that the people are concerned about. I think I'm a good listener. I've had calls today from people who want to meet with me, and I'm willing to do that. I think we need to be more visionary with our preparation for the future. And as a result of that, I think we'll be able to come up with the very best solution for the overtaxing burden that is upon the people of that county.
Thank you. This question will go first, excuse me, to Mr. Spencer. How would you address the issue of water availability for future growth?
Water availability will become, if it's not already, one of our leading challenges. We do live in a desert. If we don't look at this realistically, we're fooling ourselves. Are we making sure that we hold people accountable for how much water they use? If you ask the city water department, how much water people use, they go through the numbers and they talk about, well, we use this much for domestic uses and this much. Well, how come it goes up 60% in the summers? Because we'll water our lawns. Watering our lawns is a great thing, but if we can't get enough water to drink in five years, we should look at whether or not we should encourage having green sustainable duty. Is there escaping the way to go? If you want to have a nice golf course lawn, it shouldn't be free. The city shouldn't subsidize your golf course.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Would you repeat the question?
Sure.
So I can address it specifically.
And so we're on the clock. How would you address the issue of water availability for future growth?
So I just happened to have had a conversation this morning at Rotary with Professor Godsey from ISU who is studying this issue. From her perspective, potable drinking water is, rather than quantity, is the biggest issue, with nitrate being among the greatest pollutants. However, one of the big questions that we're going to have to deal with is ag water versus urban water, particularly since our crops in this part of Idaho are both high water and high till. And if we go into a drought pattern where we have, we are not set up at all, including at North Gate, no plans for gray water. So we are going to find ourselves in a battle.
Thank you. Mr. Colbit?
I'm concerned about the water issue. We compete, and the city of Pocatello has X amount of water rights. We compete with our agricultural community as well. And I think that as we develop, what I get concerned about with our projects such as North Gate is the conversations that are not probably happening as they should regarding how much water can we provide that community. I think that we need more players at the table in that conversation. And I think that as we grow, I think specifically in our area, I think it will be a very big concern.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega?
Wow, water, the juice of life. As we grow, most of the growth that we're seeing right now is residential. And if residential is competing with ag land for water, then we need to figure something out. Because the more homes we build, that's more landscaping, more gardens, more grass, more, 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 more. And in the summer, we all know what it costs to get our grass to get grain. So if we're going to continue to grow homes like we're growing homes, we're going to have to figure out a way, either give incentives, like other communities have done in Nevada and Arizona, given incentives to the people, partnered with public grant money, to get people to replace their lawns with other types of landscaping that doesn't require money, water, so that our ag land can use the water it needs.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I shall put the skunk on the table. Chubak has some of the best water resources, and if Pocatello and Chubak were to come together, we might be able to solve a big problem because Chubak has the water, Pocatello has the sewer. But we've talked a lot about water on the city council. We have acquired some fairly senior water rights in a land acquisition within the last few years. We are very conscious of the utilization of gray water in terms of watering our golf courses and some things like that. We have in place many, many good discussions, but the best ideas maybe haven't come up yet. And so we're willing to listen, but we are paying close attention to this as one of our major problems.
Mr. Schmidtlein?
I think the Mead Creek watershed is vital to take care of. 90% of our water comes from that Mead Creek area. So I think that's priority number one for our city, is to pay attention to that. The second thing we need to do is, we as citizens need to come together, and we need to be more water-conscious, more water-conscious users. We need to come together as a community and come up with some of the solutions. If there's water available in Palisades, well, we can bring that water in. But it's up to all of us as individuals to partner with our government and to make changes in our community. And I think every single one of us understands how important water is to our community. Water's life in our community is dependent on it. And so as a city council, that should be one of the primary focuses that we, that our council should stay focused on.
Thank you. We'll go first to Chris Stevens with this question. It is a repeat from seat three. You might have been expecting something like this. What do you see are the pros and cons of combining Pocatello and Chubak into one city? And where do you stand on the issue?
So first of all, I stand for research-based, thoughtful decision-making in any situation. And I don't stand for anything different than that relative to combining the cities. I think the way it was broached created a great deal of animosity. It created a great deal of insecurity, probably in the employees in both cities, certainly from what I've heard at doors, in the employees in our city, Pocatello. So I believe there's a lot of homework that needs to be done before any decision is made. Secondly, I think there may be a way to ease into it because we have vast differences in a number of our ordinances. And we could begin cooperating there and learn to function together, find common ground, and perhaps then take the next step.
Thank you. Mr. Colbit?
I think that the idea of one city has a lot of merit. I think it needs to be looked at a little more. But I think along the lines of Jim over here, that I think that there are a number of things that could be significant savings. When you look at a budget, most any organization, you're going to have benefits and compensation as probably one of the largest outpieces. And so when you take having one city council, or one mayor, or a potential manager, I, but one thing that does concern me is that when you have a conversation like this, what I don't want to do is have the messaging for employees at either city that, okay, well, maybe my job's on the block. I think that that is not an option because I think what is very important, and employees need to feel safe where they work, that their job is not at stake.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega?
I really have no idea whether that's a good idea or not because I don't have any information. A press conference took place last week where a $5 billion number was thrown about, but nobody knows where that number came from. So it might be a great idea. If it makes financial sense, then that's great. But here's what I do know. Pocatello has 700 city employees. Chubak has 102. So we're not going to just eliminate a bunch of money by, because we're duplicating tons and tons of services, because we've got a lot more city employees than they do. The idea of every city employee having to reapply for their job at the new city, that's going to be a logistical nightmare. People have seniority. People have, many people are getting ready to retire. How's that going to work? Nobody's thought any of this through. It might be a good idea, but I can't take a stand until I have information.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Aren't ideas wonderful? I've been pretty quiet about this since the hoopla broke out after that news conference. I still think a good study would be extremely important for us. And if we find out that it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. If it does work, then let's do everything we can to eliminate any wasteful spending, duplication of services. There are about 64 employees between Pocatello and Chubak that would go away through attrition each year. We're not trying to eliminate anybody's job. We do not want to see that. But we do want to see a study take place to see whether this could be the way in which we could save the most dollars. Some people say as much as $900 a year could go into your pocket as a taxpayer if the numbers that some people are speculating.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidtlein?
Well, I think it's worthy to study. But I also believe that I have an opinion, and I don't have all the answers. But as a person who used to work at Chubak and a person who lives in Pocatello, I like the city of Pocatello the way it is, and I like Chubak the way it is. I think maybe if there was some money savings, maybe we'd all like that. But right now, as things sit, I'm a Pocatello guy, and I'm going to stay that way. My friends in Chubak, I know they're Chubak people. They got Chubak League baseball, a bunch of them are Highland Rams. And you know what? That's great. I think that's, you know, the way it should be. I'm all for leaving Pocatello, Pocatello.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
We need to do a real cost-benefit analysis. Governments are not businesses, but there are times when a government must run like a business. And when you're looking at a merger, which is what we're talking about, you need to do a business analysis perspective, like several people have mentioned. Let's do a real cost analysis. What's it going to cost us? Sure, there are potential administrative savings, which we would probably make up through attrition. We wouldn't be firing people, I don't think. But what's it going to cost? Right now, we have too many unknowns to decide, to make a decision. I'm all in favor of having a discussion, doing a study. Let's look at this. Let's figure out where we're going to save money. Are we going to save money? Are we going to gain efficiencies? And then that's where we need to start, is let's work together with our neighbors, together with them, do a study, not our own, not their own, but together do one, and figure out if this is going to make any difference for us.
Thank you. This one will go to Mr. Colbit first. It's an audience question referring to the Pocatello Supply Depot, I think referring to the naval ordinance plant. In the heart of Pocatello handles caustic chemicals, including cyanide. In what way should the city be involved to ensure the safety of residents?
Well, I think that if we have an issue with hazardous materials, we, first of all, our city government, we basically do three things. We do legislative, we do quasi-judicial, and then we do a budget. That is our sphere of control. Now, obviously, there's probably code enforcement that this would play into. If there's something in there that is out of code, then we can do something with that. But the point of that is, is that obviously, I mean, I don't know, but I would find it hard to believe that we would have the employees with the expertise to be doing that type of abatement. Now, obviously, we would need to come up with a solution for that. It probably would be entering into a contract and having qualified people go in there. And if that is truly the case, then we would deal with it. We would fix it because we have to, not an option.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega?
Sorry, could you repeat one more time?
Sure. So on the clock, Pocatello Supply Depot, in the heart of Pocatello, handles caustic chemicals, including cyanide. In what way should the city be involved to ensure the safety of residents?
Well, clearly, the city needs to know what's going on. The city leadership needs to know, be in that loop. We need, the city leadership should know what's being handled, how it's being disposed of, how it's being stored, all of that. We could partner with I N L, we could partner with ISU to find out how to best deal with those types of things. It's definitely not my area of expertise at all. But I, so I would, I would want to be talking to people who that was their area of expertise to find out, what can we do? What do we need to do to keep our citizens safe?
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
The Pocatello Supply Depot is down by West Side Players. It's in that big fenced-in area. I've never been inside there, but I do know the results of cyanide bombs being placed in residential areas, where a dog was killed and a young man lost his pet and was injured also. We have to... We have to be aware of what's there. I'm not aware of any problems that have arisen from the Pocatello Supply Depot. But I am aware of challenges as a result of what comes out of there. And we need to be very sensitive to the safety of all of our citizens. And I'm grateful for a great police department, great fire department, and others that do a very good job when we have challenges. But maybe this is an area where we need to look closely and make sure it's not a problem brewing for us.
Apologies for mischaracterizing the location of the Pocatello Supply Depot. If that changes your answer, I'll give you a moment to percolate. Mr. Schmidtlin?
That's a 238 Dillon Street, I believe. As far as the cyanide bomb, the, well, I call it wildlife services down there. I believe that they should be transparent. I believe that the citizens of Pocatello deserve to know what's going on down there. And when we talk about transparent government, I think the federal government, when they're operating within our city, they need to be transparent too. And if there's danger to the citizens, we need to be aware of that. And if there is a danger, then we need to facilitate the removal of that. And I think that we should, as a city council, move forward to having those cyanide bombs illegal within the city because of what's already happened with one of our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
This issue is very personal to me. I'm the building manager for the building that is two feet from this building. That's my building next door. I understand. It means something to me. So the question is, are they properly handling dangerous chemicals? Do we have the experts in the city that know that? Do we need the experts to know that? Or is this a federal regulation that we need to involve the federal? It is a state regulation that's involved the state regulators. Let's not take on projects that aren't really our responsibility or expertise. Should we know? Certainly, we should. How do we do this? We ask. We encourage the state to ask. We ask DEQ. We ask EPA. What's going on there? Is it safe? Do we as a city have to do anything? Again, we don't just decide, let's go in there and throw some laws at them, throw some rules, because maybe they're meeting all the rules. We don't know. We need to find out before we start throwing things at them.
Ms. Stevens?
Well, I think we need to define the problem because frequently, problems, what is a problem to one person may be a different problem to someone else. So if we have a problem, we need to come together around what is the problem that we think we have. Then we need to check all the regs, local, state, federal, and see what capacity, if any, do we have to bring pressure to bear. We also need to ask all the questions of the appropriate people. Once we know who the appropriate people are, and then whatever enforcement or oversight we actually have within our purview, then we should feel free to exercise that as a community for our own benefit.
Great. And we'll put 15 seconds back on the clock for Mr. Colbit. Now that I've clarified, I mistakenly identified the location of the supply depot. So 15.
So my head was in the gun plant. But if we have a issue like that, then I think, first of all, we've got to take an intake on that, and then, first of all, confirm that there really is a problem in the first place. And then, once that is done, then we can send that off to the right people that can take care of that.
Thank you. Any additional? We're good. Okay. So this next question will go first to Ms. Ortega, and it is regarding the city budget. When you look at the city budget as a whole, are there ways that city spending can be changed in order to reduce property tax burdens?
Well, that's a, that's a really good question. When I look at the city budget, I see line items that are very, very vague. And so, for example, office supplies. Office supplies is what? Is that pencils? Is it computers? What is it? Nobody can answer those questions. And it's, and it's like that across the board. So I think that the city budget needs to be looked at to find out exactly where every penny's going. Make sure that the taxpayers are getting a return of investment. Make sure that we're not just spending money at the end of the fiscal year because we still have money in a department's budget, and they have to spend it or they won't get the same budget next year. And we need to, and I think that if we look at the budget closely, I think that we can reduce the budget. And reducing the budget will end up reducing, lowering the property tax rate, property taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I've had the opportunity to work on our city budget for the last seven-plus years. And it's a document that's about that thick, and it's impossible to know everything that's there. But I've looked very, very closely and debated with my fellow members of the council what is of most worth to the citizens of Pocatello. And it's very difficult to cut out things that we already have. I'm all in favor of using the things that will help us. For example, I need a lifeline to get the exact name, but there's an organization that wants to give us $50,000 to help us with the spade and neutering program. I'm in favor of doing those things as long as we don't have to match those funds because we don't have an extra $50,000 to do that. But we have, we've done our very best. You know, when you get a $23 million oblong...
Thank you. Mr. Schmidtlin?
Well, in all budgets, there's probably areas to cut. However, we don't want to cut services, and there's a lot of people dependent on, you know, their jobs with the city. And I think it's important to take care of those people. But the taxpayers, that money that we pay for taxes, for some of us, it's a significant portion of our budget, and that money, to me, is sacred. So every dollar that this city spends should be spent properly. It should be spent on the things that we need. And I'm sure that there are some things. Dr. Crislow told me I don't have to know everything, so I don't know the budget. If there's a, if it's that big, I would never know. But I'll just say that, as a councilman, your money's sacred, and it's important we spend it right.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
As Mr. Corbett mentioned earlier, taxes are a combined county-city effort. We don't have full control over that, so we can't talk about what we're going to do. We can talk about how we spend our money. I haven't done the detail work that Mr. Johnson and the rest of the council have with our budgets, but the devil is in the details. I have looked at them. They are very challenging. We don't have a lot of waste. You can't look at our budget and go, this department, that department, they're not being efficient. I believe our citizens are trying. Our citizens and our employees are trying as hard as they can to not waste our resources. Does that mean we can't look at it and figure out what we're supposed to do better? We need to. It's something we have to do. Part of that is, as Jim has mentioned and others have mentioned, what are we doing for business-government partnerships? Can we leverage our business associates who want to help us get there? And that's what we need to do. That's a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I believe we need to take a really deep dive, and I don't mean the council. I mean people who know how to look at numbers in a deep, deep way. We need to take a deep dive into our budget and understand specifically what we are getting for every dime that the, that the public puts into our government. I also think we need to look at, again, with expert advice, we need to look at a different budgeting process. Right now, at least what I can see as a citizen is we have an add-on process. We know fixed costs. We can project income. We have priorities. We can set where we would like to see the levy rate come in and work from there. We don't do that now. And my concern is, if it takes nearly or the full 3% allowable by law just to turn on the lights and keep the machine running, it's no wonder we don't get anything really big done in this community.
Thank you. Mr. Colbit?
Well, the budget's online for anybody to look at. It's all there. I took the time, some late reading, and I will say that the current city council's doing a fantastic job. The fact of it is, is that the problems that we do face is that when you have your employee benefits and compensation growing at a faster rate than what you can legally tax, you have a problem. And that's just the empirical facts. So instead of having ways to cut, yeah, you cut where you can, and the council does a good job at this. But you need to come up with some different types of ideas. For example, I'm convinced that having a primary care clinic on-site here will save the city approximately $150,000 a year. It's no different than what Amy's Kitchen does. Why would we want to have all the employees do that when we can bring it in-house? And cities do do that, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, this will go first to you. Many issues and entities impact the city that are outside of the control of the council and the mayor. So point of privilege with this question writer, I refund the question a little bit. With all of the topics in the news around property assessments, around county jail conditions, around the Portniv Wellness Complex, the closing of TIF districts, school funding, how can you, as a city council member, influence those things that fall outside of the purview of the council and the city but are so critical to the health and well-being of the community?
That's a very insightful question.
Very long.
Or whoever.
Took me a long time.
Yeah, putting that together. One of the greatest things we've done in the last year or two is met as a city council, with the Chubbick City Council, with the county commissioners, with the school district trustees, and with Idaho State University, talking about the common issues that we have. That agenda is one of the very most important ones so that we can talk about the things that affect all of us. I think that's important. There are a number of government mandates that we don't have much control over. The end of my other question. The $23 million that we had to spend in cleaning up our waste treatment plant to meet a new government requirement really hurt our budget. We had big challenges. We had a lawsuit that impacted us a lot. And we have really had a tight, tight budget, and our city employees have done masterfully well.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidtlin?
I think town hall meetings are a really good thing. I think it's good to bring organizations together, other government organizations like the Chubbick City Council, the county commissioners, et cetera. But I think it's most important to be able to meet with the citizens. And I know that that doesn't happen a whole lot at city council meetings. I've came to them, and sometimes they're just tough to sit through. I feel for these guys who have to sit up here and go through it. I mean, it's really tough. But I think those town hall meetings are awesome because we get to meet you and talk with you and hear the concerns. And then, what's even better, we get to collaborate. And I think that government, as representatives, it's about collaboration and, most importantly, representation. We're here to represent you. And how can we represent you if we don't hear you?
Mr. Spencer?
Mr. Johnson pointed out, I know the city council's done a great job of working with our neighbors. This is where we work with Chubbick. We work with the county. What do we, what do we all face together? What burden was put on all of us together? How do we meet it as a city? Do we better meet it as a region or as a city? So that conversation they're having, that I've heard a little about, not all the details, I know you're doing it, that's what we need to do. That's what we need to continue. Need to have that same conversation with our local businesses so that if we have a regulatory burden, be honest, things have changed. The playing field has shifted a little bit. Let's talk about how that can work together so that we don't put a large tax burden on you, and we can help you do your best to be part of our city. So it's a discussion. It's part of that communication, working together.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I think we need to get away from maintaining this perspective that we need to each maintain our turf or our power base, and we need to start focusing on what benefits people. Because that's why, that's why people are elected officials. And if we are not focused on that and we're busy protecting our turf, we're wrong. I know, I'm going to use an example. So first of all, city contracts with the county and with Chubbick around the animal shelter are desperately out of date. So we need to make sure that we have appropriate agreements so that the taxpayers of Pocatello are not the animal shelter, in this particular example, for Chubbick because we're less expensive to drop off a stray animal, and for the county. So we need to enforce what we've got, and we need to focus on the people first, and the turf wars should go away if we do that.
Thank you. Mr. Colbit?
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. Here we go. There are many issues and entities that impact the city that are out of the control of the council and the mayor, such as property assessments, jail conditions with the county, the Wellness Complex, Portniv, closing TIF districts, school funding. How can you, as a city council member, influence those things that fall outside the purview of the council?
Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is that, that can be spooky because the first thing immediately comes to my mind is the open meeting laws. So it's very tempting to engage in conversations with people and organizations, but when you do that, and then you come back and you have to have a discussion on that, you have to disclose that. And I'm pretty convinced that a lot of times those things don't happen. So I think it's important for the council to stay in its own lane, and, you know, I wish there was more time.
Ms. Ortega?
So, yeah, whoever asked that question, you're 100% right. The city has nothing to do with the assessments. That's a, that's a county thing, and it's mandated by the state, the state. But our county elected officials answer to no one but us voters and taxpayers. When it comes to the city, our city elected officials answer to us, the voters and the taxpayers. We just need to start holding people accountable. We need to start demanding that the city, that our city leadership stands up for the city residents. There was prickets from our city leadership over that whole property tax assessment fiasco. Not a word was said. And it would have been nice for those of us who live in the city to have felt like we were supported by our city leadership when it came to that.
Thank you. This next question goes to Mr. Schmidtlin first. What are the city of Pocatello's next moves to ensure the city's economic prosperity?
I think the next moves for the city are to plan. We need to plan for the future, and we need to move to be a city that's kind of that light on the, that sit on the hill. We need to move forward and be progressive and to be that city that everyone else wants to be. Because I know we have the community where we're full of, we have good people, there's smiling people, there's smart people. We have a university here. I think that to get prosperity, we need to have a higher quality of life, and we need to focus on taking care of the citizens, and that's going to move us forward.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
To ensure our prosperity, we need to work with our existing businesses. Are we doing for them what we can do as a city without costing us more money? We've had a lot of people talk about things we should do as a city, and then we sort of hint at, well, this is a great thing to do as a city, but how are we going to pay for it? We've got to make sure we're not costing ourselves more money when we talk to other businesses, when we talk to our current businesses. We do have a great quality of life here. That's why I'm in this town, because of the quality of life. We need to ensure we advertise and promote that. Make sure people know what we have here that makes us special, that makes us unique. And not be afraid to work with our neighbors. Work with the, work with the county, work with the county development board, work with the city of Chubbick, work with Fort Hall. Work with our neighbors. What do we do together so we can go forward together?
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I also believe we need to work with our local businesses because there's no point in looking to bring in new businesses when we're not supporting and growing the businesses that are already here. Secondly, we do need to reduce taxes somehow. Boise uses us front and center on their webpage to demonstrate how great it is to pay taxes in Boise versus taxes in Pocatello. We are branded all over the state, and we need to do something about that. There are all kinds of organizations that help cities develop a profile and look at what kinds of businesses are moving into communities with profiles like ours. We do not utilize those. To my knowledge, that has not been done. We are not doing what other cities who rebuild themselves do.
Mr. Colbit? Mr. Colbit?
So I believe that it's not just about jobs, jobs, jobs. I think we need to do a better job, or I should say, we are making big headways with ISU to align businesses to the types of jobs. A good example of that is Premier Technology. We need to get back to the trades. It's too bad that Woodshop is gone. But if you're going to be building all these homes, why in the world do we not have an HVAC program in the technical college at ISU? You can't get the people to do these jobs. So you need to better align to certain industries. And I don't want us to see any job. We have a very high ALIS population of working poor that works two to three jobs, and what they really need is they need stronger skill sets to make it. I told my son at breakfast, I said, if you start seeing all your waitresses and people serving food in their 40s and 50s, you know that you're probably in really big trouble. So that's, I think, what we need to be focused on.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega?
I think a better quality of life in this town is all about how much money is left in everybody's pocket. It's all about disposable income. And there's a huge part of our population that has zero on a good day, disposable income. They're struggling just to pay the power bills. And the way the tax situation is, those of us who have a little bit of disposable income now have a lot less of that little bit. So I think that's a problem. We need to court good businesses. Amazon is opening a distribution center in Nampa, and they're bringing 1,000 jobs to Nampa, and the lowest wage is $15 an hour. We didn't even court Amazon for that distribution center, and I would bet a donut that they would have much rather been right by two major highways than out in Nampa. Because we've got the 15 and the 84, and that would have been a much better location.
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Johnston?
The next move for economic future and benefit in our community is going to come from the ideas that people just like you are going to create. We've been criticized as a council for not being available. I've really struggled with that tonight because I am so available in talking to people. I must not be talking to the right people. But I think the best ideas are here. And as I talk with people, I listen, and I'm trying to suggest some of those things. I've worked really hard the last few years to try and broaden my perspective, to be personally more diversified. And I've learned a lot because I have reached out to some of the groups that previously I was not involved with. I want to do a better job, and I think I can because I'm a lot more sensitive now than I've ever been before.
Thank you. And now, we will take a minute with each of the candidates summing up maybe their vision for the future and any concluding remarks they may have, starting with Mr. Spencer.
I made a commitment to this community years ago when I first got here. I became involved. I'm still involved. I'm active in this community. I'm engaged with a diverse group of individuals. I'm engaged with arts community. I'm engaged with the schools, with the college and the high schools. I'm active. I'm engaged. I listen to people. I get to talk to people. Mr. Johnston has stressed, House of Lords, get out there and talk to people. That's why I'm here, because I know a diverse group of people. I want to continue my service to this community, and I think, I believe in this town, and I want to be a better part of, help it grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
I think those of you who know me know I know how to take a big project, chunk it down, plan it out, and get it done. I, you know, I was the county leader for Medicaid expansion, which some of you may or may not agree with the concept of Medicaid expansion. We can talk about that later. However, I know how to take a seemingly daunting project and get it done. I also know that talking to people doesn't happen when you're out at events shaking hands. It happens when you have town halls. It happens when you go to neighborhoods. It happens when you knock on doors and talk to voters, which is what Roger Bray and Claudia Ortega and I have been doing. We have knocked almost every precinct. We're about five short. That's talking. That's listening. Not going to a baseball game and being present.
Thank you. And those are the first half of your choices for seat one. Now your two choices for seat two, starting with Lance Colbit.
So some people here know me a little better than others, and some don't know me at all. But I think that probably one of my greatest strengths is actually working as part of a team. I wasn't always a team player. When I joined the Navy, I learned real quick that I could either be on the team or I could have a boondocker in my butt. And I came around. And so the point is, is that, you know, I feel it's a pretty great distinction to be asked to serve as the treasurer for U.S. Senator Crepo. Obviously, he could have asked anybody in Idaho. I'm very good with money. It's what I do for the last 26 years. I'm very thorough, and I am very good at what I do. But I think the best quality, with that being said, is actually being a part of something is working in a team.
Thank you. And the second candidate for seat two, Claudia Ortega.
I started the recall. A lot of you who know that know I did that not just for me, but I did it for all of us because the way things were handled was not right. I'm not afraid to question. I'm not afraid to challenge a leadership, authority, elected officials. That's my right as an American. I have a right to speak out. You have a right to speak out and have answers. So that's what I want to bring to this council. I want to bring you an opportunity to say what you need to say. Tell us what your needs are so that we can address what those needs are. Every neighborhood in this town has a different set of needs. And most of the people who live in each neighborhood have pretty good ideas on how to fix those issues that they're dealing with. And I think that that's the best thing I can bring to this council. And I want to thank the police union for endorsing us.
And the final two candidates on the slate for seat one, start with Jim Johnston.
One little thing I'd like to clarify. Why are the taxes so high in Bannock County? It's because of our tax base. We need to grow. We also have received no taxes from Idaho State University, from any of our schools, from any of our churches, and I'm glad they're here. We need to work harder at broadening our tax base. As a Pocatello chief, the name that was given to me is Chief Helping Hands. I have always been a helper. I want to continue being a helper. And I'm grateful for the opportunity the citizens have given me in the past to be a part of the city council. Because the closer government is to us, the more important it should be to us, and more people should be taking a greater interest in what's taking place. I know I have two ears and only one mouth, and I'm grateful that I can listen.
Thank you. And with the final word this evening, candidate Schmidtlin?
Well, with the final word, I want to say thank you. Thank you, the League of Women Voters. Thank you for all the candidates that I sat with in all the meetings. They're very, very good choices. I think we're very lucky, and thank you for all the citizens who come to these meetings and participate and make the community I live in better. Thank you for all the efforts of all of you. I would love to be the first Native American ever on this city council. I would love to represent you. I believe in representative government. I believe in transparency. I believe in Pocatello. I believe in our future. We're surrounded by goodness and good things, and thank you all for being here tonight, and thanks for letting me see with so many great people.
And I may have misspoken because I get the final word. Forgot that part. I really want to thank you for your participation. It is always a delight to have such a good crew here. I hope we asked your questions well, and want to let you know a couple of things that are important to keep in mind. Early walk-in voting at Bannock County Elections Office, next to the Bannock County Courthouse at 141 North Sixth Ave, Monday through Friday, now through November 1st, 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Your last day to request a ballot by mail is Friday, October 25. Please vote on Tuesday, November 5th, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We can register at the ballots, Election Day registration in Idaho. So bring your personal identification. You can do a personal ID affidavit there or bring a government-issued photo ID. And to get involved in the League, there's information out on the table, or talk to any League members, they have badges on, or check out the League of Women Voters of Pocatello on Facebook. We hope you leave tonight better informed, and thank you again for being here.